I want to point out that it is improper for Max to be here today. Because the police chief wants to come now and there would be an issue. So for you, you aren't paid an administrative leave, you are not supposed to be here. That would affect the outcomes of the investigation, you are not supposed to be in the city hall. And there would be an issue because the other guys wants to come now. So how are we supposed to handle this? I think, you know, it's improper for Max to be here until the investigation is done. And I would ask the deputy police chief to scope him out. Because we would have an issue. You keep the police chief out of here without giving him, you know, an opportunity to defend himself and you want to be here while you aren't paid an administrative leave, that's inappropriate.
Would you like me to respond here?
No.
Oh.
I also recommend me not to speak right now.
That's all right, I'll be kicked out. Lost it.
What did he say?
Lost it. He said lost it.
Yeah. There is a group of people here.
One. So, yeah, we don't want the other people who are on the street to be here and there would be an issue.
I think there's no need to comment further.
Okay, let's see, let's go start with the meeting.
Are you ready?
Can I ask you for a quick second? Can I just adjust the camera because it's a little...
Yeah.
Is that okay if I do that real quick?
Yeah.
Does that focus?
Yeah. Okay, that's better.
Yeah, make sure it don't fall, then I have a lawsuit.
Good one. Okay, that's better, we can start. Thank you so much.
All right, you ready? All right, good evening, everyone.
Do you want to start everything over again? No, this can't.
No, no. Well, thanks everyone for coming. I called this meeting of Hamtramck City Council to order. Today is June 10, 2025, and it's 7:11 PM when the clerk called the rules, please.
Councilman Mufai is not present. Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Sidman?
Present.
Councilman Wood?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Present.
Mr. Mayor, we have a question.
I didn't do this last time because I know, I didn't want to add drama to already what was going, but when the mayor pro tem isn't here, you're required to vote for a new mayor pro tem specifically for this meeting. I let it go last time.
I heard a text that he will be a little bit late, he's on the road.
Beautiful. In that case, we don't have to.
That's perfect, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, please rise for the pleasure, please. I applaud the leaders by the citizens of America and the public for which this has been a god. We have a new agenda item, what is that?
That's an old.
That's an old thing?
That's old, yeah, I updated it.
Do we have any community announcements? No community announcements, all right. Proclamations, recognitions, and presentations. We have proclamation recognizing the 30th anniversary of the genocide in the United Nations protected area of Serb Karunica. Do you want to read it? You can go ahead.
Who do you read?
Can I be honest with you? I'm not going to be able to pronounce the... And I apologize, but I don't want to voice to them and not give the respect that there's...
You don't want to read it?
Yeah, do you want to read it?
You want to read it?
You want to.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor?
No, it's okay, you can read.
Okay.
I'm struggling with the pronunciation of the...
I think I can, I'll try. How do you do Srebrenica?
Srebrenica.
Srebrenica?
Yes.
All right, try it. Recognizing the 30th anniversary of the genocide in the United Nations protected area of Srebrenica?
Yes, Srebrenica.
Srebrenica, sorry. All right. Whereas both the United States Senate, the United States House of Representatives passed resolutions acknowledging the genocide that the Serbian forces perpetrated in Srebrenica and all of Bosnia from 1992 to 1995. And whereas July 11, 2025 is commemorated as the 30th anniversary of the Srebrenica massacre in which at least 8,372 innocent Bosnian civilians were summarily executed and 30,000 were expelled from their homes in the worst atrocity in Europe since the Holocaust. And whereas this anniversary raises awareness of the tragic suffering of the Bosnian people and honors and remembers those who died as a result of the policies of ethnic cleansing and aggression. And whereas the city of Hamtramck recognizes the importance of this event to bring closure for the Bosnian people through justice and truth. Now therefore, I am Mayor Galib, Mayor of Hamtramck, do hereby proclaim July 11 as Srebrenica Remembrance Day and proclaim the week of July 11, 2025 as Bosnia and Herzegovina Tribute Week in Hamtramck and call upon all citizens to work towards ending the cycle of violence and promoting peaceful coexistence among them. Signed by...
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you now. Now we move to the additions and additions, do we have any?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Just Councilman Hassan.
I'd like to add the resolution to investigation company, new investigation company.
Yeah, so it's Miller Johnson, so to, a motion to, to Miller Johnson's engagement.
All right.
And then we also need to add a closing.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to add another resolution for closed session.
Can we vote on that one first, please?
Yes.
Are you all in favor?
Yes.
Thank you.
So that would be G, right?
Right.
Okay, and now Hassan, Councilman Hassan, do you want to add your second one?
Yes, resolution for the closed session, city business.
Second.
Tom Taylor.
And then please the amended agenda.
I'd like to offer the amended.
Second.
And all the chamber?
Thank you.
Public comments, please.
Abraham Al-Jahim, please turn away.
I am Mayor Council, acting city manager, city attorney, deputy chief and clerk. I first want to say, everyone. And there's a festival this weekend for Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday at Keyworth Park in Memorial Park. And the first thing I want to talk about is Investigator David Adamcheck. We want the police department to delete every single investigation he was part of in the city of Hamtramck. Because they're fraud, they're unfair, and he's basically a liar. And I experienced that firsthand. So whatever investigation he did, from September 21st till the day he left, whether it's real estate, and he was talking about it. We're investigating real estate, we're investigating pharmacies, we're investigating smoke shops. Okay? What investigation are you doing when you tell the people that what investigations you're doing? What investigations you're doing when you tell people you'll pay them $1,000 for FPKs and BSI? What investigations, David? Another thing, thank you for hiring this company. Miller Johnson is well-known and well-respected in the state of Michigan and this country. Now we go back to Max. When you guys went on closed session, Ahmed Sherafet Deen was recording, he was right here. Someone was asking what's going to happen in the closed session. He said, what do you expect, they're all Muslims. Okay? And then he goes to the news and says he wants to see the city. He says there's a decade of corruption, why? Because the Muslims are the majority for a decade? Is that why you're investigating the Muslim Americans in this country? And if there's corruption in the city, why haven't you did anything since the day you started? That means Max Giappiano is part of the investigations and the corruptions in this city. And the residency for the council members should be all deleted. For the voter fraud, they should all be deleted because Max and David and the clerk was part of it. Two days later, Max left. Our honorable clerk took a picture with the matter event that I was invited to, I didn't go. It was in Dear One Civic Center. I don't think Max should be involved with any city official. And I want the private company to investigate every email, every text, and every phone call that goes between David and all of the department heads and that work for the city and the police officers. Same thing goes with David, and the same thing goes for the chief. We want this to be a fair investigation. Like I said, and I'll say it again, against Chief Tahiri, this is not an investigation, this is defamation. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to clarify, the session that happened last meeting, it wasn't a closed session. It was just suspension of rules. We clarified that when we came back, so there was some misunderstanding. It was just, we suspended the rules and did some discussion. The second thing is, I think Max is here to intimidate the city councilman mayor and he should not be inside the building. If he's still here, I really don't feel safe now. He should be out of the building. If he's outside in the hallway, he should not be here. Is he outside there?
Yes.
He should be out of the building.
That is an executive order, so we feel threatened.
He's here to intimidate and cause trouble and sending threats. If he's sending threats or lawsuits and he used to order recording of the elected officials, God knows what is he planning to do today.
Respectfully.
He should be out of the building.
Respectfully, should be outside the building.
Not just only out of the building, out in the city because he's not leaving the city.
We should not say that, but in the building we can say, please. Everybody welcome to our city.
I know there was a conflict of power, it was obvious.
It shows.
But this body is the elected body from the people that decides what goes on in the city.
Okay, Mr. Chair.
Not the outsiders. So we can continue with the call.
Thank you.
Mayor from, sorry, Trowbridge. So, just in regards to the lawsuit, there's a lot of unanswered questions. And I think I have more questions than anything else to say right here. First of all, I hope you sort of clarified the problem with the closed session last week because I think our city attorney knew and set up this call, this discussion, whatever it was. And I think he knows the law, so I can't imagine how this discussion was illegal. If it was, it was our city attorney that allowed it to happen, so I would check that out. Also, the relationship between the city council mayor and the city manager is very complex. And I think the charter doesn't, there's a lot of things that charter doesn't cover. And I know that you have the right to, you have the power to hire a city manager. I mean, you are the ones who hire them. And the manager has control over the departments and you can't talk to department heads, you have to go through the city manager. But as far as putting the city manager on leave or whatever else, I think you have the power to do that. So I don't see any laws being broken here, but anyways. I want to say there's a lot of other unanswered questions. One is, when and how did this whole lawsuit become a whistleblower lawsuit? Do you know what a whistleblower is? It's usually associated with finding corruption and fraud in government where millions are being stolen from taxpayer, taxpayers. In this lawsuit, whistleblowers are seeking to gain millions from Hamtramck taxpayers. It's not for big corrupt companies. This lawsuit against us, against people here. This is a clever game that's being used more and more by people across the country for personal gain. And it's a great example, a great example to place in our own city, right back in the housing commission, as a matter of fact. The director pulled off a scam with hit whistleblower thing, and you ought to look into this now. The media looks into this and what happened there, nobody put it in the media. And this is a true story, the way they gained a lot of money from whistleblower illegally. My second question is, my other question, another one, there's many of them. But what, why is the media jumping on this story only from one side? Does it sound like they're taking a side already? These are allegations.
Very true.
It's unfair to people. We have to all understand these allegations. And we don't get to hear anything from one side. The police chief hasn't had a chance to say his piece. When is his day in court? And how long will we have to wait to get him back on the job if he's found not guilty? He's a well-like person. He's very friendly and defends, and he should have a right to defend himself against these allegations that are mostly against his character and not against his criminal charges. He says they're all false, so how long do I have to wait to hear approval? And will the media be interested when his story comes out?
Thank you.
Can I get another minute? So I don't know if you saw this press conference or so called with Max and David and lawyer Marco. But it looked an awful lot like three guys who evidently white making 254 charges against several individuals who all happen to be not white. I don't know how much Marco knows about the history of racism and Islamophobia in Hamtramck. But I hope he gets a chance to study it in depth, especially since he's supposedly interested in civil rights. Does he know about how long Muslims were intentionally kept out of government in the city? Deprived of running for office, challenged at the voters box? When I was a chairman in the Relations Commission, there were no people of color in this city hall right here. And that was when they were more than half the population were people of color. So people have to really stop these accusations of candidates not living here, especially when the city doesn't have any definition of what living here means. It's a tired old attack that never worked. Let the, please let the investigation begin and let's move on and return to working together. People that want to work together, thank you for your sense of humility, thank you.
Hello, Mayor Council. The reason why I'm here today is to announce that the election season is starting. The primaries are coming up in August and in June, June 20th, we're going to have a candidate's forum presenting all the candidates for the city residents to find out about and voting. The candidate's forum is going to be held on June 20, that's a Friday evening, starting at 5:30 with a light dinner actually. Because a lot of people are probably just coming back from work so they can get something to eat during the event. And the candidates will start presenting their biographies at 6 o'clock. And at 7 o'clock, there's going to be a question and answer session. Now everyone is invited and we encourage all the candidates to participate in this forum. So far, only four candidates, or actually five candidates, the first one joined today, have announced their participation. But most of the Bengali and Yemeni candidates running for the council have not announced that they will participate. And we strongly encourage that because it is necessary for people to know the candidates who are running. And it's necessary to have some biographical data on those candidates so the residents can make informed decisions. And we would like all the council people and all the people listening to this to let others know that this event is coming up and everyone is invited to participate. They can ask questions to a particular candidate and afterwards they can mingle and talk. And there's going to be actually no limit until everybody gets a chance to talk to the person that they wanted to. And the chairman of this event is Kamal Rahman. And there is nine individuals who are part of this non-partism committee. And the committee consists of all nationalities, different nationalities. No one is taking any sides. Everything is pretty much neutral and I hope everyone is going to participate. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. There is no organization name, who is, whose organization doing that?
No, it's an ad hoc committee. Committee that nine individuals came together who are not affiliated with any particular organization just so they can work the event. There is no particular organization involved.
There is the person I know is involved, the other organization, Commonwealth Organization.
Oh, the people might be involved in other organizations.
The committee, he's the chairman of the committee.
But the committee is a non-partism committee that does not express any opinions, that does not support any candidates. And everyone who comes in from the candidates has the same chance to express themselves and to answer questions. So from the public.
Who picked those peoples?
Well, those people came together from already last, last election cycle, some of them were part of it. And they were interested in working the event. They do not express any opinions again, and they do not support any particular candidate. This is completely neutral, non-partisan, and everyone has the same ability to express themselves.
All right, it's optional, I mean, it's not mandatory, whoever wants to participate, nobody's forced to. So thank you.
Thank you.
Imam Mahra Fasir?
Good camera work there, Tom.
Good evening, Salaam alaikum, peace be upon you. Hello, Mayor, council members, thank you for this proclamation, for recognizing the 30th anniversary of genocide in Srebrenica. I'm a little bit familiar with the situation in this house, as I'm not familiar enough. I have nothing to say at this moment. But we have a congratulating letter for Mayor Dr. Galib being nominated for the ambassador, US ambassador to Kuwait. Dear Mayor, US Ambassador Dr. Galib, on behalf of the Commonwealth Alliance, the Cluj Interpolation, the Ministry and Spirituality Center for Humanity, I would like to express our heartfelt gratitude to President Donald J. Trump for nominating you as the future US ambassador to Kuwait. We extend our warmest congratulations to you on accepting this esteemed nomination. This well-deserved recognition is a testament to you, to your steadfast dedication, exceptional leadership, and longstanding service to both our city and the brother community. Throughout your tenure as mayor of Hamtramck, you have exemplified a vision of progress, unity, and integrity. Your contributions have made a meaningful and lasting impact on our city and we are confident that those, that those same qualities will distinguish your diplomatic service abroad. While we will certainly miss your leadership at home, we take great pride in knowing that you will represent our nation on the world stage with the same passion and commitment. Please know that our thoughts and support go with you as you embark on this important new chapter. With sincere admiration and best wishes to success in your new role. Your brother in Islam, Imam Mahra Fuzkic, founder and president of Commonwealth Alliance and Ministry and Spirituality Center for Humanity.
Thank you. I would say, if confirmed.
Thank you.
We're still waiting for the confirmation and there are some people who try to disqualify me.
God is there, so have God qualified, no one can disqualify.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you all. And thank you, attorney, for reading this proclamation to us.
Thank you. Greg Karachuk?
Once again, the eyes of the world are on Hamtramck.
One second, let me just get my picture. Pause this time.
Yeah, I'm starting over.
Thank you.
Once again, the eyes of the world on Hamtramck. I just want to mention, today we discussed this genocide of Srebrenica. It's ironic because people are comparing Srebrenica with what's going in Gaza now. Because here we have a government and the UN and all of these world organizations are basically... And the situation happening in Srebrenica is that UN actually conspired. They were actually partying with these Serbians before they killed them. They trust these guys, that's happening there. Everybody's trusting Israel. Everybody trusts Israel. That's a real problem. We trust their investigations when they, when we say there's war crimes. They don't find any war crimes, well, thank you, thanks for telling us. Okay? That's how it works. That's how it works. There's, it goes back to war crimes, it's genocide. Anywhere where it said there's war crimes. Two Jewish scholars, one at Hebrew University, one for Brown University, has said there's genocide. Okay? Respected Holocaust scholars, there's genocide in Gaza. America and the State Department have done nothing. Have done nothing but continue to have arms so they can kill more people. Okay? That is something that needs to end. We had a resolution that made news around the world. We can have another resolution. We need to come and pound the table. And I'm sure when he's confirmed, all these Jewish groups are going to say, hey, you know, what about this BDS resolution? They're going to try and get him because he supports BDS. They already brought him to the State Department during his training sessions. So it's happening. So we need to go there, but we need to tell Trump, we want the war in Gaza to end once and for all. It's not, it's not even a war, it's killing civilians, it's starving civilians. It's finding ways to kill people in new ways you've never heard of. Okay? And so we suppress, news right here, I actually got cutie games from people in Gaza thanking me for putting their stories up and disseminating them about what's happening, people have been shot at by those ready defense forces. This is what's happening on a daily basis in Gaza. The State Department needs to stop it now. Thank you.
Thank you. Abdul Ashaheer. Abdul?
Salam alaikum wa rahmatullah wa barakatuh. Again, I mean, I came now to the Council of the Republic. I came to the show. My head, the leader of the race, the judge, I'm sorry, I'm not going to say it. I came, I drew a little rap, all I know, I was a shus, I'm telling you, I'm going to get a fat in my back. I don't know how. I'm scared, I'm bad, I'm going to be like 5. One of the bad, it was safety, my head, safety, I'm bad, my head, safety. I was trying to do that, it's a rule. I had a bad, I was trying to do that, it was a safety, I'm bad. I was trying to do that, it was a plastic. I told him, it's a question, I was like, I'm good, I'm good. I was trying to do that, it was a plastic. It was a rule, I did it. I'm sorry. 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 I'm sorry.
Thank you. So, he's complaining about some violations that he's getting regarding his lot into his house and the front of his house and not being able to get a second garbage can despite that he has two floors. So, who would be able to address his concern now?
I can't. I can't.
John, please. Tell him about John. He's always sad. Okay? He's shrug out. He's always sad.
I am.
John.
Mr. Chair, can I add something to it? John, just one second. By the way, he came last, what, two months ago regarding his lot that the company put their tools and equipment, and they messed up his lot.
I remember that.
So, he came here and complained. We directed the city manager, was Max, was John, to take care of it. Other companies, either they put grass back the way it used to be, and it seems like they only put dirt. So, we're requesting that whoever the company used, you know, fixed Goodson and put all their machine work equipment on that lot, to either put grass back the way it used to be, or the city needs to take care of it.
Yeah, that's what's happened with Hennessy. It may not be in full completion yet, or when they did that, I don't know if they're waiting for a particular month or when they're out of there, but we did have the discussion with Charles and Hennessy, and they are aware of it.
I think just the way he's saying is follow up with that. Make sure they get it.
I'm totally aware of the situation. We still have to put in the 10-by-20 structure or junction chamber that's at the intersection of Lumpkin and Goodson, which means more of that area is going to get disturbed. So, I have a feeling that's why the contractor has not restored that area yet. So, I will make sure myself personally.
All right. Thank you. You know, keep him updated too, so he knows.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That's all for public comments, Mayor.
Thank you. Let's move next to the consent agenda. This is approved, a single motion with no discussion. We have approval of matters from the April 8, 2025, for a city council meeting, B approval from voice register dating the June 10, 2025, C approval, pre-approval expenditure dating the June 10, 2025, D resolution 2025-68 approving appointment to boards and commissions.
Awesome. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And the appointees will take care of the process later on. Thank you. All right. So, we move to the new business, and we have the first one, resolution 2025-69 approving Michigan Department of Treasury Form L 4029.
Motion.
Second.
Mayor, this is the form that needs to be approved. This is part of the form that we put up in the last public hearing in the ordinance. At that stage, we had not received the final approval from the county, and there's no change in the form that was put up for hearing. Now that we have received the approval, we require the council to approve this, and then we'll have the signed form from the mayor, so that we can then, you know, adjust the summer taxes accordingly.
Any questions? Any discussion?
So, this form, it will affect anything from the residence tax or anything?
This is the same form that was part of the ordinance hearing. There's no change in that form. This is just the approval that county gave for the taxes and for the millages.
Okay.
It's modifying, modify version?
It's not. It's the same version.
This is routine every year.
It's just that, you know...
Every year we have.
Yeah. We have to approve this. This gives the final millage approval from the county for the city.
But no modifications?
No.
The millage, it was informed here, not here. Is the same millage what we have?
Yeah, right.
It's not increasing anything.
It's the same millage as was in the hearing. Yeah. That was in the hearing.
All right. Temple.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Wood?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2025-69 approved.
Thank you. Next one is resolution 2025-70 approving increase contract amount for the 2024-2026 utility pavement repair program.
Motion.
Second.
So, Mr. Mayor, this is a resolution. We have Tiffany and John here to explain these. The next four resolutions are related to various projects that we have. So, this first one is basically the utility pavement program that we have, which we approved previously for three years, and right now we're just looking at enhancing the amount in that program. The bid has already been, you know, awarded. The work has already started since 2024. The increase is based on the same rates that we have from the contractor. We're just increasing the overall, you know, contract amount for this particular project, and the project itself is part of the water and sewer fund.
So, can you explain, because the question that everyone has, why is the increase after we made the bid?
More repairs. It's based on water main breaks, which we don't know the number. So, the more infrastructure we have that fails, we tear up the street, we tear up the sidewalks, tear up the roads, we have to go back. We actually spent 200 and some thousand, first year alone.
So, the original budget for the three years was $417,559.52. In 2024, the total expenditure was $280,000. So, what we're using is that as the baseline now for, obviously, last year, this coming year, because there's like about roughly $139,000, I think, or something like that, in the balance. And then, we need to also have funds for next year. So, if we use the baseline of last year, 280, if they don't, obviously, they're only going to get paid for work that's performed. So, if they, if work is under 280,000, you know, it's not going to be expensive.
It's all based on piecework, so...
But we don't know how much water breaks.
So, this is just for the water main and what else?
Water main, curb boxes, anything that fails that we have to go out to on an emergency service, dig up a road, dig up a sidewalk, street, we have to go back, and we have to put that concrete back. So, this is not even something we decide to do. These are things we have to do as a result of a fail.
So, last year was, I heard, the lowest year when it comes to water main. We didn't have many breaks like we used to in the past, so... Now, if we go back to the bid, to the original bid, and this was the lowest one, now we're increasing it by double, so how's that?
We had a lot more valve replacement. So, when we have to shut off to do repairs, and we don't have working valves, a lot of our city, unfortunately, most of the valves don't work. We don't find out until we need to use them. So, then what we're forced to do is dig up the road to fix them at that time. So, we're, it's not, nothing, like I said, we're trying to add to put, this is all as reactive.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman.
Okay. So, this is kind of, is coming to be a trust issue. Predicting, how exactly I predict the dollar amount? And I'm the one monitored the water break this city last 16 years. Most of the time, I called the city manager or police department. I didn't see last year the much. So, always we do the amendment of the budget. If we know need, it's happen, we'll use it, then we'll amend the budget. We're doing that. We've been doing that. We don't have to free approve that much money for the somebody. I kind of disagree with that. If it is breakdown, you'd have to do it, expand it, and we have a CFO, he will adjust it, the budget, and this is kind of thing, how I know, the question, is going to be cost $840,000. It could be, is the approximate of the dollar amount what base? How is the criteria? What's happened? Previous experience, lower than before. Now, we are thinking it's going to be more than last year. So, again, it's not that necessary to approve this one. That's why I feel. I'm going to leave it alone. My idea is up to other councilmen. And if we have a breakdown, we have a carp is coming, and fix it and use it, rate is same, and adjust the budget anyway. Thank you.
So, can I add to this? This is a three-year program that we had the approval for. We appointed a contractor to carry out this activity. Now, based on the way we work, is that we take our purchase order based on the overall, you know, contract price, and then, as the amounts get used up, that purchase order amount gets reduced until it goes to zero. Now, if that amount goes to zero, we will not have the authority to carry out any emergency repairs. That is the reason why we are asking for an increase in the overall contract price. That doesn't mean that we are going to spend this money. It's just so that if there are any emergency situations, we can carry out those repairs. Your point on the budget is correct, that, you know, if there are changes to it, you know, we will make the amendment to the budget, but that's a separate process. This is basically an approval to carry out this activity in an emergency, and all of these activities under this program are emergency repairs. It is a reactive program. It is not a proactive program. So, we got an approval, as Tiffany said, for this particular program, for around $400,000 for three years. What we saw was that in the first year, we ended up using $280,000. So, now what we did was, we used that as a benchmark to add around $280,000 for the next two years each year, to make it up to 840. That doesn't mean that we are going to spend that money. It just gives us flexibility to address issues in an emergency.
I think it sounds reasonable, but how is that fair to the other companies that made the bid and then ended up being kicked out? Maybe their plan wasn't going to be like this for the future.
Because the rate, we're not changing the rate. He was the lowest rate, and he will continue at that lowest rate. Other companies had higher rates. So, that rate will remain the same. It's just that the work increases, and because the work increases, you know, you end up increasing the amount of the contract.
These are all barrels you see everywhere, the pulls offs, the barrels, the pieces of sidewalk mess, and the small pieces of street mess. That's the utility program. That means we did the repair. We have to go back.
I have a just for a... See, that kind of explanation we need?
Yes.
Okay. What's this order you have to wait? Yeah, I understand. I want to put in, but the one question to you as a CFO, this amount going to impact your budget too much?
No, this is the...
I know, it's the two. I don't want to lose all the money from that part.
Right. So, this, we do budget for utility repair program in the budget. So, it's not going to impact the budget too much in the water and sewer fund.
Mr. Chair, I'm okay with it.
So, basically, this is set aside money. It's, yeah.
It's a set aside approval.
It's an approval. So, by 2026, if we still have money remaining, it will come back?
Oh, of course. Yeah.
It doesn't even actually get spent.
It doesn't get spent. So, money is always there in the budget and in the fund.
Well, you want to...
Well, I got a question too. So, I know we're giving them three years' contract, correct? With the same rate, but as you know, things go, are getting expensive. So, you tell me in 2026...
They'll go at the same rate.
They're not going to want more money?
No.
No, we were under contract.
We put it out to bid with unit prices. Like, we, they, we try to figure out an average quantity for concrete repair, HMA repair, you know, the stone base aggregate, and we put all those line items in there with this unit quantity, so they can, which is, so everybody, every contractor is bidding on a price per that unit quantity.
And it doesn't change next year?
Because it's a three-year contract, so the time period remains the same. If we were extending the time period, that would have, maybe the contractor might want more money, you know, on a unit rate basis. But since we're not increasing the time period, we're just increasing the quantity of repair. And again, that is based on an estimate. It may or may not happen, and, you know, we might come in much under this amount.
And there's nothing on the contract states that, hey, if things go expensive and then I have to raise?
Not for the three years.
So, the problem is, I can't do too high of a quantity, because I can only reduce a contract by 25% of the contract amount. So, I have to keep that quantity realistic, and it's one of those where it's really hard to sit there and try and figure out how much we're going to, you know, have, because, you know, we're hoping we don't have many water main breaks or, you know, and other utility repairs.
Yeah, other repairs, like, repairs and things like that.
My only other option would be to increase the quantities a lot, and then, that's where at the end of the contract, if it's reduced by 25%, that's where we have an issue with how the contracts are written.
I just want to make sure, because as we know, the term is getting high. Trump is charging all the taxes, so I don't want them to come back and say, hey, listen, you know, things are getting expensive, we have to charge you guys more.
Luckily, most of the stuff that we use, these is all local, you know, so...
All right. I'll be honest with you.
When they have the increase, where they can collect that increase from where?
No, they would just, based on the amount of work they do, they submit their invoices to Hennessy for review, and Hennessy ensures that, you know, this is the amount of work that they have done, and based on the work that they have done, the rates are already there, and based on those rates, you multiply the amount with the rate, and you get an amount.
Is there going to be increase for the bills? Is there going to be increase from the bills, sewer taxes?
No, no. It's sewer, water and sewer system.
And water system, but it's not increased in the...
No. They're just going to put it there, use whatever they need, whatever left will come back to us. So, just, all right. I think we can go.
Councilman Wood?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Yes.
Do you want to come back to you?
Let him think.
You want to think about it?
Yes.
Okay. Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Drum roll.
They sing, yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, resolution 2025-70 approved.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the next resolution is basically a companion resolution for this previous...
Yeah, approving the increase of construction services fee for the 2024-2026 utility pavement repair program, so it's related to the first one.
Motion. Second.
All right. Yes, go ahead.
Sorry. Yeah, so that one is basically supervision, you know, for the Hennessy. So, because we are increasing the first amount, so the second amount must be improved, increased a little bit.
Thank you. All right. You want to add anything? All right. Maybe we can go and vote.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
No.
No? Final answer?
If we agree on the first one, this is...
This is the supervision fee?
Yeah, this is just related to it.
No, what is the reason of 35 today? Okay, go ahead.
Don't bully him. I'm busy.
No, I'm just saying, it's there. Do you want more?
Do you want a signal? You wanna signal, it's up to you. What do you want?
No.
Thank you. Councilman Hassan?
No.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 202570, still approved.
Did you call Mu Musa?
Yes.
Okay. Not that we forget about, all right. Thank you. All right, the next one is resolution 202572, approving award of the 2025 State Airmark Alley Replacement Project.
Motion, second.
So, Mr. Mayor, this is the grant that we received, 1.5 million. So based on that, this is the first, you know, contract to repair about nine alleys, which was presented earlier to the council. So this is that particular contract.
So we put this out to bid, opened bids on Tuesday, May 22nd. We had six bids with Mark Anthony Contracting coming in at the lowest bid at $972,702. So this will be coming out of 100% from the 1.5 million state earmark grant. The nine alleys, do you want me to read those through?
Yes, please, for the public to know.
So alley one is west of Joseph Campo between Anderson and Greeley. The alley east of Joseph Campo between Roosevelt and Jacob. The alley south of Jacob between Joseph Campo and Gallagher. The alley north of Goodson between Joseph Campo and Gallagher to the dead end, Keywood Stadium. The alley east of Conant between Dorothy and Miller. The alley north of Miller between Conant and the city limit. Alley east of Conant between Oliver and Vincent. The alley west of Conant between Jacob and Hamley. Alley west of Conant between Hamley and Lehman.
All right, thank you. Do the pick where this up from me, right? All right. Any more discussion?
No, such as.
Vote, please.
Councilman, who, Councilman Rafai? I was about to say Al-Samiri.
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Al-Samiri?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 202572 approved.
All right, thank you. Next one, resolution 202573, approving the 2025 State Airmark Alley Replacement Project Construction Services Proposal.
Motion, second.
So, Mr. Mayor, this is the sister, companion resolution for the previous one, for Hennessy to supervise the project services for that particular grant.
All right. $87,000. All right.
And not gonna increase next year, right?
It has to be nominated, right?
This is from the grant.
It was the one.
All right. All right, thank you.
Ready? Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Al-Samiri?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 202573 approved.
Thank you. Next one is resolution 202574, approving changing the authorized regulatory for all this dispersal request through the Michigan Department of Environment, Railways and Energy.
Motion, second.
Mr. Mayor, this is a resolution that we need to give the approval for the CFO to sign all the disbursement requests and all the documents from the city manager to, previous city manager to myself.
Yeah. We need to adjust one here, Mr. Mayor, not previous city manager.
Well, I'm sorry, the city manager to.
Acting city manager.
Acting city manager.
Yes. Yep, that was needed and it's time sensitive, so we had to do it today.
Ready? Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Al-Samiri?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 202574 approved.
Thank you. Last one is resolution 202575, adding the Johnson and Miller agreement for, to carry out the investigation and the local investigation, the city hall, right?
Right. Second.
Yeah, so basically, Miller Johnson, they're a very reputable firm. The mayor and I reviewed numerous firms, not just, not just this one. And they were, these were the most professional and best. And also, very importantly, there are no conflicts with regards to this, this firm. There are no, nobody, we made sure that they checked and made sure that they don't have any relations or anything, any dealings in their past with Max Garberino, David Amcheck or the chief. And on top of that, so the, we've instructed them that they need to investigate Max Garberino, David Amcheck and the chief and to see what, exactly what's going on and to unravel this mystery of what's happening here that everybody's trying to find out. And they're empowered to do that in an unbiased fashion. They're, we're basically giving them the full reins to do what they need to do and they're gonna investigate it thoroughly and then, and then report back. And so I ask that you approve, it's already been approved up to $10,000 basically, which is what the city manager has the authority to do. So basically today we're asking that you approve them in full, for them to do what they have to do to help us here.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Previous council meeting, we give you and attorney to look for all those things and you guys did very good job. We have full trust on you guys and I'm supporting that it's getting improved.
Thank you. So, I mean, those people, we didn't know them personally, we don't know them, but we did our research. We asked places in Hamtramck that had an experience with investigation, such as public schools and other places. This was involved, but we got multiple names and then we did our research and we met with them. And those people seems reliable. So I think the pay would be hourly based on the agreement, but 10,000 would be placed upfront and then they will receive allegations from, you know, against each person and then they will do their investigation. And then we'll wait for the outcomes and based on that we'll take actions.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
So I got a question, I know you asked for approval for this amount, for this investigation. Do you have any story about the previous investigation, where this funds came from? Since we don't get any.
No, that's still a mystery and.
Oh, so you're talking about the residency? I'm looking into that. I'll, but you know, basically they haven't billed us yet, so I'm trying to find out where that is. I am working on that to figure out what's going on.
They were so generous to do everything without the money. All right, so regarding the local investigation, I don't know how he was getting paid, but that's another thing to investigate. So if no further discussion, we can go ahead and vote.
Mr. Chair, only one point. My previous practice, 16 years, I saw that anything go over $10,000, city manager have to come to the council to get the approval. I did a good practice today, I see that, and it was the previous practice too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
All right, you can go ahead and vote, please.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Al-Samiri?
Hi, yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 202575 approved.
All right, with that, we come to the end and.
Okay, two more of them.
One more?
No, he just proposed.
Two more, that's what he said.
Yeah, that's.
So that comes after everything else.
Yeah, one from later. So reports, I don't have anything to say, but I will add to this last resolution that I think it's, it's the decision of this council to, to investigate something, not, this is not an administrative thing to be taken by, without our knowledge when we investigate something, especially investigating elected officials. You are the most powerful body here to make decisions. So for someone that you hire to investigate you, I don't think that's reasonable. That's not logical at all. So that's an issue with, you know, that will be included in the investigation. Another thing is that the people of Hamtramck are the decision makers. I mentioned earlier that there is power conflict here, that some people who are hired to the city wants to be in control of everything. And their philosophy is either I control you or I will sue you. That's not how things work in here. You are the, you are the owners here in this city, you are the voters, you are the taxpayers. Therefore, you are the decision makers, not the outside. And for us, we can't function under threats. Every time there's something you, they threaten you with doing something. That's not how things work out. Now the trust is lost. There is a lack of trust with those people, with some people who are, you know, under I don't think we can function in the future anymore with those people, not all of them, but with those who showed their, you know, retaliatory actions as soon as they left. And I think, for me personally, I think, like I said earlier, my integrity is my strongest weapon of defense and I can challenge the whole work with it. I'm not worried about anything as long as there's justice and transparency. For some people now to send threats, you know, that we will do this, we'll do that, to the point where they will threaten me with my, affecting my confirmation at the Senate. You know, I said it earlier, if fighting corruption and standing for justice would cause this, would cause them to reject me, that's an honor. I'm not doing anything wrong here. I'm calling for fair and transparent investigation. And for outsiders to come and keep, you know, observing our resources in this city, that's unacceptable, especially with those with criminal backgrounds. When you look at their backgrounds, lawsuits in 2003, lawsuits in, you know, against the public schools, lawsuits, this is, I don't know how, who brought them and how, that's what corruption is actually. Max left in 2015. If you watch the videos, he kept saying, oh, I didn't do nothing, I don't know what they're talking about. The videos are on YouTube with the media. And then it turned out to be a huge scandal. So that tells you about, you know, the current situation, how it's gonna go. And then he was brought back in 2019. Who was the mayor during that time in the council? I don't know. It wasn't me. So where's the corruption? You were separated and you signed an agreement to waive your rate to be rehired to Hamtramck. So you know that you had no right to accept, even if somebody invited you. Then you came back in 2019. Who brought you back and for what? Because the media and I was talking about corruption. That's what corruption is. When you commit a crime, then you is, you are brought back to the city to continue working. When there's someone who abuse over time and you are protecting him and embed and start investigation against him. Investigation was ordered against the Adam Check in the morning, then afternoon it was switched to be against the police chief. Why? Isn't that retaliation? Why didn't you allow the investigation to continue against this police officer? You shift that attention to the police chief. So we talked about this before, but when the media after last meeting keeps talking about corruption, corruption, show us what corruption are you talking about? And let me give you an example of what corruption could be, look like, could look like. Because now a lot of people, including some previous elected officials, keep talking about corruption, corruption. Last, in 2022, I removed three commissioners from the housing commission in March and they responded to my emails and they acknowledged receiving the emails, which means that's it, you are removed, I'm replacing you with three others and I announced the names. Right after that, they called for emergency meeting, special meeting. They did not wait one month for the next meeting. They called for a special meeting in April and they took, you know, some, some dangerous decisions, changing contracts of the housing director and then changing the succession plan of him and change a lot of stuff by voting while they are already terminated. That tells you about the work ethics of those people. That's how they used to run things and they think we do that. If somebody here will do this, you know, I will be the first one against them. But that's, that's what corruption is and that's what bad work ethics is. You take decisions to change things secretly behind closed doors and you are already terminated and you know that and you acknowledge that. That's what corruption is. Now, you wouldn't see this in the media because we try to work things peacefully. We don't wanna cause problems and accuse anybody of this or that. But now that we are being accused of corruption and all you read is he said, she said, he said, she said, there is no solid evidence. And we can, we have responses that would backfire on that person who keeps making up these fabricated stories against us. So just, this is something just to respond to these accusations of corruption that they are. Show me some evidence like what I just give you, criminal activities of running things. And so there are some issues with selective enforcement of laws and regulations in the city that we will talk about. There are some issues with protecting corrupted people in the city. And that's as a result of conflict of interest, previous relationships that are suspicious, micromanagement of some departments, including the police department, that's not allowed. Mismanagement of stuff, overstepping authority and power to investigate your boss. Who give you the right to do that? This body decides who gets investigated here or not. And so there are a lot of stuff that we will talk about in the future, but I just wanted to address what, what corruption can look like that we are talking about. And if, like I said, this philosophy of either I control you or I'll sue you is not gonna be affected anymore here. And the vetting process of hiring people will change. Because when you bring someone back and you know that he has a criminal history and you know that they come back for to just, you know, get our resources, whistleblower thing. You know, they have done it multiple times in the past and that tells you why a person comes back and start recording his boss from day one. Why? Why would you keep recording people? So you can catch something to start the whistleblower initiative that you are used to, easy money. That's what they do, just to look for your resources. So this is gonna change. No person with criminal background would be hired again. I mean, this is not my job, I'm not the city manager to do the vetting process and I'm not supposed to get involved in that, but we will supervise from now on. This is not gonna happen again. Because that's where the issues come from. People who have, you know, bad history with this city are coming back to initiate problems of corruption again. And they are protected by their boss. So with that, nobody's allowed to be in the city hall while they are administratively leave because there is an investigation going on. And for you to be here, that means you would cause bias to the investigation. You would affect the process of investigation, you are not supposed to be here. Because we are trying to make sure that there is no internal factors that affect the outcomes of the investigation. And so if a person is under investigation, you are not supposed to be in contact with the city hall employees while the investigation is going on. That's the reason why we didn't let Max be here today. And so, so that's what I wanted to clarify, I, we have a lot to talk about, but let the investigation continue and then, like I said, whoever is guilty would face consequences. I'm not, I'm not now defending anyone. Everyone is subject to face consequences if they are guilty. And we will wait for the outcomes and see. That would be my report for today and we will move to the mayor's court and report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanna thank everybody for coming here tonight. Now, it's all one of special thanks to the mayor and our city attorney to take your time to actually look for the right firm to investigate. And I bet that took time and effort of their, both of them here, so I wanna thank both of you guys for doing that. You guys have a good night and take care.
Thank you. City council, anyone?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Hassan, go ahead.
With respect and honor, you are the ambassador. No matter what you're going with or not, whole world knows Mr. Dr. Amir Gali is the ambassador to the Kuwait. Anybody wanna try to prevent you to go there, still you are the ambassador. From the residents, from the community, from the world, that is the, that is the real honor. Second, last council meeting, one of the public comment was the budget. They don't know how to balance the budget. I'm the expert of the budget balance in 16 years and I'm the one send the letter to the Michigan State Finance to come, look at our finance. So if I have to balance the budget, I don't need the CFO. I don't need the city manager. It's the city manager and CFO job together, how they're gonna bring the budget, balance the budget, run the city, improve the city, save the city from bankruptcy, all those things. It was the previous practice from 2009, I saw that. From the 2009, 2010, 2013 budget session, one department, four hours. Department had come, explained to us, this is my things, I need little more money from you guys to adjust my this area. And we request him our heart, can you please give, you give us 50,000 back, that's why we can have same something adjust. That kinds of conversation is the budget session, not the one hour before council meeting come budget session. It was previous practice like that, even though in. It was previous practice like that, even though, including George Faruk department too. Respect, because of this elected body is the government of the Hamtramck City. All the power holding residents, from the residents we get the power to hire city manager, oversee the city, how the managing, all those things. The complaint came about, it was the news conference. Only the news conference thing little I will address. We wanna fire HR lady and bringing the ethnic issue. It was now, one of the, one of the employee have a written complaint is in here, my email. Say I've been discriminated, they fire me. I want you guys to look at that issue. I ignore it. Second time, you're not gonna listen to your residents? Then I escalate to my city manager. Can you please look into this issue? And she sent me all other documents still here. I'm going, if investigator one I can give. I forward to him, one day he was in the conversation. Can you please, we have a lot of complaint coming like this. Can you please give us some information? Not directing you, to ourselves clarify we are okay. So that kinds of conversation we had, we never had the conversation to fire somebody. There is the department head. Former city manager, when department head, the employee under department head not listening to him, manager give department head warning, this is your job. If your employee not listening to you or not doing, you have to give them notice. Not me. I'm gonna give you notice because you're not doing your job, not giving them notice. That case, news conference said, somebody we wanna fire for one particular issue what was not satisfied by our ordinance. So, I'm not gonna go more than that. It is not true. We are requesting to the media, please, waiting for investigation done. Then you guys gonna know what is real history of this Hamtramck City. And also, the corruption, your lady explained that. I'm not gonna go the corruption. The, the Max Gabrino came here, that time I ran for mayor, I was not here two years. It was contact, previous elected bodies, they brought Max Gabrino. He's our good friend, we trust him, we have respect, we do still have the respect. He is our city manager, still city manager. That respect, trust, that previous elected body brought him as a contact. We are the one make him permanent. We are the one give him pension back. We can say, we hire you from today, your pension start from today. That's why I wanna say media, we are good people, we give him his pension back. And that kinds of people, we are, we thought it was necessary or it was good thing to give him. We give him pension. Even, we say no, we don't have to. So, all those things, respect, I respect my city manager, I respect Dave, I respect our police chief. Only the matter of fact, fair investigation done. And if nothing wrong, we all, they're all coming back. And that's why I have to be a respect. So that respect, I think city manager should not come today here because it is, three times I saw the city manager was removed or suspended or terminated, and nobody came back to the city council meeting. It is kinds of respect. We respect my city manager, and respectfully, please don't take anything personal because we don't want a couple of other problem. It's the, some other people calling, they're gonna come with the police chief and making some problem. We don't want any problem. We want a fair and respectful investigation done. Then we'll take care, what we need to take care depends on investigation. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to add to your point, he was hired. We hired him against multiple Muslim candidate.
Yes.
And he's saying now there was discrimination against him. How's that possible? I mean, he was chosen out of multiple Muslim candidate. And I don't know how he talking about discrimination and stuff.
Another, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I missed one point. We have the assistant city manager. We was buzzed for that, and we hire one time. Because of our city manager and assistant manager conflict, we go the city manager side to give the fair opportunity city manager to run Hamtramck City without any stress or headache or other prevention. That's why we let a previous assistant manager to go. So she was the Muslim too. So, there is not the thing is Muslim, non-Muslim. This is the Hamtramck City. We are all human, and we are taking care the business of Hamtramck. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you have a report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, in my council, acting city manager, attorney needs, acting police chief, my residents, and the people who came here today and listen to us. Mr. Mayor, you explained all those things. I don't wanna go back again and again. But I let you on this. I really appreciate it, Mr. Mayor and city, attorney needs. What they really had, get all the resorts and get the, on the top notch investment company. I hope they find the right things, and somehow the mistake happen, and we can correct ourselves. Whoever the guilty person, he get the punishment. And this is the way we make exemplary punishments in future. Nobody can see he's above the law or under the law. Nobody is above the law. Thank you very much, and all those people from Hamtramck, in the States and all over the world. Eid Barok. We just passed our Eid last, last Friday. I hope everybody enjoy it.
Thank you. All right.
No meat, no invite. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes. I would thank everyone for coming tonight. At this point, I think the whole city is waiting on our investigation report. I think we should have a report soon, and I'd like to have a message, that's my policy. Thank you for everything.
Thank you. All right. I think that's the end of the reports. We move back to the second round of public comments, please.
Thank you. I want to start with an email that I forgot to read at the first public comment. This is Charles Blackwell. Good evening. In light of the credible allegations of wrongdoing against Mayor Ghalib, he does not deserve to be an ambassador. That's it for that one.
Who said that?
I'm sorry. Yeah.
He answered.
Mark Corey.
Thanks again. One thing that I've not hear, Miller Kaminsky is out in the west part of the state. They've been out there since at least 1950s, I'm aware of. Sitting around a long time. But what they wanna mention is that, who's gonna defend the city? It's probably gonna go to federal court in this action. That's I'm wondering. Because when I was suing the city, they spent $350,000 with three different law firms and had at least 10 attorneys go against me, okay? And Roger Webb, so it's like two against 10. $350,000. 37 people were deposed, okay? And I know the whole situation, how Max, you know, he went through a deposition. Andy Maleski went through a deposition. You went through a deposition, Mr. Hassan. And we got loads of documents from the city. I mean, thousands of pages of documents. This cost the city a total of $350,000. And they didn't mention resolve two case anyway. There was some other case I filed against the Cobra Unit people and some other stuff. And I tried telling people, and all I got was, we're gonna seek sanction against you, Rule 11. We're gonna go after your bargaining, so we're gonna go after you, whatever do with it. Well, all the people that did that were gone. Everybody. I can remember we sat at Crass Van Lysen over there. He just sit around here, he used to go out to dinner with, you know, city manager, and I remember Max. What was, dopey situation, we were spending huge amounts of money, because that's what people are looking, that's what he said. How come all this money is being spent? Where's it going? 10 attorneys, you know, and I looked at that. And I says, there's their case out there, it's not only case. I went to Bob Zollick at council, I said, you know what? I'm gonna show you a list of everything out from the court here. There are 12 cases involving your city. Because I didn't even know about most of these. So you're at city council, don't we told you about these? That's the city manager's duty. Why wasn't this done? So, all these things, we saw so much dysfunction, so much lack of communication between departments in city council. It was amazing, okay? That's why we need to look at this very carefully.
Thank you, Mark.
Can I have more time, another minute? Thank you very much. I never asked that before, but I'm asking now, because I want to say more things. During our investigations, we had uncovered so much. For instance, I had a 2012 case involving Mohammed Hassan, when he had his problems roof. We had a sentencing agreement, okay, on the record with Judge Peruk. Alex Trout was a prosecutor. It was, I got the whole transcript. I got transcripts of everybody here. I mean, I got transcripts of that former mayor, Tom Jankowski, all his testimony. You know, all these people, I got a huge, I still kept, because I figured it's worth something now, all this information. But the point trying to make is that, don't do this again. Make sure you're very, very careful and watch the attorney fees. That's what Bob Zollick says. Bob Zollick says, we need a grand jury here. Kathy Gordon said the same thing with Clint the city. So, an eye for Clint the city. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, from your experience, can I ask something? Yes, Mr. Attorney. Our city attorney, our advisor, we will talk to our city attorney. After that, if we need any help, he's gonna follow up accordingly.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
All right.
Two minutes.
Thank you. I really love Hamtramck, and I actually live here. And I've been here for over like 25 years and attended more council meetings than anybody in this room, for sure. And I have not been sued by Mark Corey.
Want to be subpoenaed?
Yes.
One of the only people in this room, okay. So anyways, I love our mayor. I mean, he's so intelligent and compassionate, courageous guy. He's right on. Everything he said is right on. I'm impressed that he knows what's going on in the city. He knows what's happened in the past. He hasn't, he's done his homework, let's put it that way. Plus, he has a full schedule already. And this is impressive person. Just wanted you know that, despite all the media negativity about this city, this is actually a beautiful town. It's the most walkable city in Michigan. Probably the least corrupt city in Michigan. Council meetings are handled better than they've ever been held for a long time until recently. It's the world, two square miles. It gives everybody an opportunity to see people from around the world, to learn about each other, try to bring people together. This is a great opportunity to live in this town. I know it, and that's why I've been here for 25 years. Most of us get along in the city, and we're learning from each other. I'm sorry for those people who have gotten a negative image of Hamtramck from the news. Because again, the wrong story. You're missing out on a vibrant, exciting, and dynamic city. We got a lot of, we got a great future ahead of us. I'm sorry if our Almar Ghalib has to leave. Hopefully, he won't get forelosed. Maybe no, I'm just. No, go ahead and do it. Hopefully, we get someone to replace you that's as good as you. Because, and all the council members, thank you for working together and enduring this terrible charade that's going on right now. We'll get through it. Thank you.
Thank you. You want my add?
Yes. Hello again. Mayor, council members, thank you for your leadership. I know the situation is now going to, God willing, uncover properly. I finished a manual with Max and Chief and all, everything else. But I would like to thank our police department for doing great job keeping us safe. Thank you, Chief, your team. Thank you also our clerk for doing great job. Brothers and sisters, I'd like to make announcement that Commonwealth Alliance, a clergy interpeterization, municipal charity, separate military organizing, Interfaith picnic, and we can pass on Harold and Alpina Corner. So, we would like to invite you in attendance on Saturday, June 14th at 11:00 a.m. till 2:00 p.m. 11:30 we will start actual program in coverage with the TV channel 19, Gray Cursing from the train park library and Detroit Free Press. We'll finish media coverage in one hour. Then later on, you can mingle and have a food, entertainment, and so on. Many elected officials already have confirmed, many Interfaith religious leaders has confirmed, and community leaders and activists, we appreciate you all for coming, and I hope to see you all. Manager and attorney, this is not involved in politics. We are religious leaders. We constantly praying to God for everything sold properly here in this beautiful city. A lot of people in the world know about Hamtramck more than even about any other cities. Great food, great entertainment in Hamtramck, so good luck with all you do. Attorney Mark, thank you very much for speaking on for Strebenica issues and genocide in Gaza as well. I appreciate you all. Thank you for generating this resolution, this proclamation recognizing a genocide in Strebenica 30 years ago, and one of the more survivor survivors. And may God bless entire humanity with peace and unity. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Kazia Hadd?
Good evening, Mayor, the council and city officials and the residents. I just wanna comment with, in everything, the last few times I came here, I just wanna express what I experienced. It's easy to criticize. It's easy. When somebody isn't doing anything, you cannot find anything they're doing wrong. When somebody is doing something, then you can say, okay, you got 80% right, 20% wrong. So, what I saw today is character. I saw character in the council, I saw character in you. It's admirable. You know, without character, nothing really matters, right? Nothing exists. If you don't stand for anything, you know, your job is to represent the people. And I have seen from this side, again and again, you and the council always asked when there was a proposal, when there was something came, somebody came with an issue, you know, something, they want to do something with the police department or the court enforcement. You always asked, how is this going to impact my residents? You know, their financial well-being, their privacy, you know, their comfort. You know, when there was planning about the city, you know, the street closure. And you always bring up, you come up with ideas. It takes character, it takes passion, it takes dedication. So, you know, for people to judge Hamtramck, you know, it's easy to do that. But they should come here and walk the streets and see what's happening. Nowhere in Michigan this is happening. This probably happened in other places in Michigan. Maybe 200 years ago, 150 years ago. But those cities are, you know, not vibrant anymore. Hamtramck is a place where it's peaceful, you can be yourself without anybody judging. And I feel safe, you know? So, you know, congratulations for you guys to do your, you know, work and the way that, you know, council, you know, argues and gets together. So this is admirable. I wish you best of luck and best of luck to the city of Hamtramck.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, that's all for public comment.
All right. Thank you so much, guys, and we have a closed session now.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to suspend the law to go closed session. Okay?
Favor of that?
You're not suspending the law to go to closed session. I'm sorry, it's already on.
Oh yeah, he already added it.
We added, yeah, thank you.
I'm sorry, you seconded?
I did.
And it's 8:37? We're not coming back on a vote, we're not voting on anything, right?
There is nothing. Okay, we're not coming back.
Okay.
Can we just take a couple of minutes?